Check, check.
Good evening. I'll call the meeting of the mayor and council of the city of Carrollton to order. Today is April 11th, 2020, and at 6:00 PM. This time, if you'll stand with me, we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jacqueline, please have our invocation issued.
Let us go to God in prayer. Dear great God of heaven, thank you Father God for this day. Thank you for allowing us to get up this morning, our right minds, and our health and strength, dear heavenly Father. Lord, we just like to pray for this community, dear heavenly Father, that you help us to lead this community, Lord God, in the way that you see fit and not the way we see fit, dear heavenly Father. Lord, we just like to pray for our community, for strength, Lord God, because we're most powerful when we are one, working together, building a foundation in our community. And as we go forth through this meeting tonight, dear heavenly Father, that your presence will bless this meeting and go according to as your will. These and all other blessings, in your dear son Jesus Christ's name we all do pray, and let every heart say amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Bridges.
I'm going to deviate from our agenda just a little bit because we have a great group of Carrollton High School debate team here to be recognized, and they're all having to stand in the back. So at this time, I would like to recognize them and their great coach, Mr. Richard Bracknell, who, Mr. Bracknell, how long have you been, where are you? I can't, oh, there you are. How long have you been the debate coach at Carrollton? A couple plus...
Plus about thirty-three.
Thirty-three years, yeah, awesome. And I know since I've been in office, this is the second or third year they have won state. So we definitely want to recognize our young people because they are our future. And who knows, maybe one day, one of them would be sitting here with a gavel in their hand. I noticed you have the gavel on your shirt, so that's really great. And this is Certificate of Recognition Carrollton High School Debate Team, 2022 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Champions. Whereas, it gives the mayor and council a tremendous amount of pleasure and pride to express to all the members of Carrollton High School's debate team, coaches, and parents our sincere congratulations for winning the 2022 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Varsity State Championship for the second year in a row. And whereas the team has a history of bringing honor to Carrollton High School and the city of Carrollton have won 12 state championships, the second highest number of state championships earned by any competitive team in the school's history, and seven second-place state titles. And whereas Coach Richard Bracknell was the recipient of the 2022 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association Debate Coach of the Year Award, and whereas you each are to be commended in achieving excellence in the field of debate now. Therefore, we are pleased to publicly recognize the following members of the Carrollton High School Debate Team under the guidance of Coach Richard Bracknell as the 2022 Georgia Forensic Coaches Association's Varsity State Champ. Olivia Berry. If y'all will just come and stand here as I call your name, and then at the end, we're going to make the presentations to Coach Bracknell, but we'll want to get a picture. Audrey Browning. Oh, don't let me butcher this name. Grace Berquist. It's so good to have a principal, a retired principal, sitting here with me. Sunny D. Martino. Alan Hawkins. Olivia Hedgie. James Hauser. Drew Johnson. Ryder Johnson. Kieran Kelly. Eden Long. Hal Mitchell. Lila Pace. Will Robinson. Robertson. Carrie York. Luke Zimmerman. And Mark Zimmerman. Let's give these young people a round of applause. Coach Bracknell, come forward and stand with me. I've pointed him in a couple of times, but Mr. Bracknell was also a council member for the city of Temple, so he's going to lay here and go to his council meeting, but he told me to take all the time I needed.
Yes. May I introduce Lindsey Oliver, who is the assistant debate coach. And somewhere along the way, did you hear that his name was not called out?
Oh, I saw it.
There were a couple that were, that's probably named.
Oh, okay. Thank you all very much, and good luck. I would make sure we're doing the very same thing.
They at least don't look like the type of kids that are arguing with the mayor, but they obviously do a good job.
Maybe it's constructed.
I'm sure they did lots of groundwork. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Mr. Bracknell, congratulations. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations to you all. Congratulations.
Okay, we'll go back to our original agenda now. This time, we have citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? Okay. All right, you have a copy of the minutes from our March meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, mayor and council announcements and comments. Mr. Waters, we'll start with you this time. I'm sorry?
He's going to pass.
Oh, okay, all right, Mr. Libiter.
Well, I'd just like to say that if you missed the jazz concert that our illustrious city attorney was a member of and actually orchestrated the jazz last Saturday night, you missed a good time. It was, it was a little chilly, but, but we had fun. And that's just kind of a kickoff, I guess, for our summer, spring and summer concerts and all the activities that'll be going on at the AMP, and I hope people will take advantage of that. And I appreciate all the hard work of the people that put that on. Thank you.
I got the opportunity to participate in Keep Carroll Beautiful a few Saturdays ago, which was an effort led by Mrs. Martina Griffin. And I would like to do a big shout out to her and also to one of our top city employees, a guy named Mike Green. And Mike really pitched in with a street sweeper. I'm not sure what you call a piece of equipment that goes around and sweeps up stuff along your curb that we take for granted, but when you go, when you go through some of these intersections and there's litter all over the place, that machine made small work out of picking up a lot of that. And I want to thank him for his efforts and all the volunteers that already got together to do that. Thank you for helping keep our city a little cleaner.
Jacqueline?
I just wanted to say to the ladies at the Quip Museum, they put on an awesome, awesome event on April 2nd. All the quips were so beautiful. And if you get the opportunity, just go over there and stop by and look at them. And they was all handmade by a group of African-American women out of Atlanta. And it was a great event, and I just want to give them a big shout out. It was really, really nice. And to all the citizen in the community, get out if you can and participate in some of the events that we'd be doing in the city of Carrollton. And I just wanted to say thank them for that.
Well, I want to say how beautiful I think our city is. All the azaleas and things that are blooming in the spring, it is just picturesque. Been out of town, came back, came up Dixie Street and looking at all the azaleas. And then I came up Oak Street this afternoon, and the white azaleas were just beautiful. And I haven't been out to the college campus, but they've always been known for their beauty of their azaleas out there. So just take a minute, take a time, and look around and see how blessed we are to live in a city that's this beautiful. And we're a work in progress. So we're working on it. It's on the front burner for most all of us, or I will say for all of us. It's the beautification of our city because you only get one chance to make a good impression. So we're trying really, really hard to make improvements and to keep our city really beautiful. And we're asking that our citizens help us with this too. So we have some things on the agenda. So at this time, I will ask our city manager for his comments.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just reiterate what you stated about the city and how pretty our city is and it's well-maintained, and most folks do a really good job trying to keep it that way. We work very hard to, in the upkeep part of that as well. Along with that, there's some, there's some growing pains as, as you do improvements, and I think we're experiencing that on Bankhead right now a little bit, but they should be out of the way by the end of the week, and we'll have that paved. And then we'll move on to another, another street in town that needs to be paved. But we're very fortunate that we have the resources to be able, to be able to do that. And it's nice, you know, I don't take that for granted. take that for granted. That's not the case in all cities. Also, I had the opportunity today to go to our community pastors lunching that our police department chief Richard started many years ago, and just to, once a month, to see our community come together, our faith community come together, and our police department and our school systems and mental health advocates and child advocates, and just getting everybody in the same room for the betterment of our city is just a pleasure to be a part of.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And we've already recognized the high school debate team. I mean, it just makes my heart swell to be able to recognize these young people. And for those of you who don't know, we have our own youth council now, and this has been going on since January, and they have done an outstanding job. And actually, I'll brag on them a little more, they got invited to come over to Marietta Wednesday to show the city council there and tell them about what an experience it's been and how important it is to incorporate our youth in our decisions and, you know, help us make recommendations, because, I mean, you know, other than me, I mean, these others are pretty young, but, you know, it's nice to have some fresh ideas every once in a while. Okay, at this time, we would like to recognize Ms. Annie Boykin, and I'm going to read the certificate of recognition, and then I'm going to let Councilman Bridges tell you a little bit about Ms. Annie. "In memory of Ms. Annie Maude Boykin, April 11, 2022. Whereas Annie Maude Dallas Boykin was born May 26, 1935, in Carroll County, Georgia, and passed away on February 9, 2022. And whereas Ms. Boykin served as a faithful, active member of Westside Baptist Church in many capacities for more than 50 years. And whereas Ms. Boykin married the love of her life, Deacon Raymond Boykin, and raised six children with him. Whereas Ms. Boykin was a longtime employee of Sony Music until her retirement. And whereas Ms. Boykin was a constant presence and an outspoken advocate of the entire Carroll County community. And whereas Ms. Boykin's years of faithful attendance, active participation, and invocation deliverance at the mayor and council meetings was acknowledged and honored on May 7, 2012 council meeting, where she was presented the key to the city by mayor and council. And whereas throughout her life, Annie Boykin embodied the ideas of citizenship, faith, family, and friendship. Now, therefore, the mayor and council, speaking on behalf of all of our citizens, hereby honor the memory of Ms. Annie Maude Boykin in appreciation for the lasting impact and substantial contributions she made to this community with a life of leadership through service. Signed this 11th day of April, 2022." Okay, Councilman Bridges?
I'd like to stand.
Okay.
And we also have a plaque for Ms. Annie May Borkin. I mean, Annie Maude Borkin, I'm sorry. "Celebrating the life and legacy of Mother Annie Maude Borkin. Mother Annie Maude Dallas Borkin was born May 26, 1935, to the late Jessie Dallas in Army Farm Dallas, Carroll County, Georgia. She departed the early life February 9, 2022. Mother Borkin was a faithful employee of Sony Music company until her retirement. Also, she served as a faithful citizen and was a pillar of the whole Carroll County community. In the end, the work she did spoke for her. And I got her plaque, and will her family please come, too, so I can give them this plaque and this recognition."
Oh, okay. I mean, until she got where she couldn't come, she was here every month, so she was interested in what was going on in the city. At this time, we would like to also honor somebody that has contributed a lot to our city by serving on the, I want to get it right, not the plant, the...
Appeals Board.
Appeals Board, yeah. Okay. But it's called something else.
Board of Development Appeals.
Okay, the Board of Development Appeals, and she has been serving on that for a long time, but let me just read it to you. "Certificate of recognition presented to Queen Tyne Valera. Ms. Queen Tyne Valera moved to Carrollton in 1972 from Columbus, Georgia. Whereas Ms. Valera worked as an elementary school educator for 35 years, with the final 20 years in the Carroll County school system. And whereas Ms. Valera has made tremendous sacrifices of time and effort toward her service to make Carrollton a better community. And whereas Ms. Valera has served the community with distinction since 2000 by serving two terms on the planning commission and an impressive five terms on the Board of Development Appeals. Whereas throughout her service on city boards, Ms. Valera has gained the respect of other civic leaders and the love and affection of area residents who are proud to call her friend now. Therefore, in recognition of Ms. Valera's outstanding leadership and dedication and the excellent record she has compiled during her service to the City of Carrollton, the mayor and council present this certificate of recognition with sincere appreciation. Signed this 11th day of April, 2022." Ms. Valera was not, is not able to be here with us, and we are going to, Ms. Studdard's going to deliver this to her tomorrow. Sweet lady, does a lot for a lot of people and has done a great service to our city for a long, long time. Okay, next we have, from the Department of Community Affairs, we have a recognition of our city. It's called Plan First Community Certificate. And we have a representative from DCA to come to present this to us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council citizens. It is my honor to attend today's council meeting to recognize and give you this Plan First certificate. The City of Carrollton applied and was recently designated as a Plan First community. The Plan First program is a three-year program that recognizes and rewards communities who consistently and successfully implement their local comprehensive plan. And just to hear some of the wonderful stories and things that's going on here is just amazing and warms my heart, and it just tells me that we made the right decision in terms of selecting the City of Carrollton for this program. The program has been, it has been active since 2015, and there are only 30 communities that are in the program out of over 700 municipalities in the state of Georgia. So please, please understand that this is a prestigious designation. Along with being designated as the Plan First program, there are incentives involved. So some of the incentives that the City of Carrollton may take advantage of is the opportunity to apply annually for DCA's Community Development Block Grant Program, the opportunity to get a half percent interest rate reduction through the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority, should you all be interested in the infrastructure loan, and then the opportunity to get basis point reductions through three of DCA's programs, which includes the Redevelopment Fund, the Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund Program, as well as the Employment Incentive Program. And those are all programs that help with community and economic development. So of course, with any program, there are expectations. And once again, this first one is so easy, y'all blown it out of the water, is to continue to do what you're doing, especially excelling in local comprehensive planning and plan implementation. We also ask that you serve as a partner with the Plan First review process, and I know that Eric and I will work hand-in-hand with that as well, and then we just ask that y'all maintain your qualified local government status. So once again, I'm very pleased and very proud to recognize you all as a Plan First community, and without further ado, I would like to give you this certificate.
I just want to say that it's because of our employees that we have this. They work really, really hard to make sure that we're keeping up with what we need to keep up with, and...
Mr. Bruce? Right. Come on.
And we're really proud of what our employees do, and they really do make us look good. (LAUGHTER). Well, that's exciting, and like I said, I really appreciate our employees and what they do and comprehensive planning. You know, you can either plan, or it'll be planned for you, and we like to think we're planning for our future. Okay, at this time, we have a request for a special use permit. 33 Brock Street, a residential townhouse community. The request came from Themis Assets Recovery LLC.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, ma'am, we have the, John Denny and Jeff Matthews with Themis Asset Recovery LLC have requested a special use permit for a residential townhome community. It's at 33 Brock Street, approximately 10 acres, more or less, there that they would like to develop into a townhome community. It was taken before the planning commission. It was voted unanimously to approve. At that time, there was no one speaking in opposition. At the commission meeting, they voted to approve with conditions. If you remember, we presented this at the last work session, and we wanted to, you guys wanted to get some more information, and so in an effort to answer the questions that everybody had and try to ease the concerns that folks had, we met with the developer. We used the Windmill Park Phase 1 conditions that were put in place when that was developed. We utilized our existing design standards, and then we, along with the developer, arrived at some different conditions as well, additional conditions. I'd like to go through those before we have the petitioners speak to us, but this property will tie into the Windmill Park subdivision, but it's going to tie in through a common neighborhood-type park or community amenity that will utilize gates or ballards to, as to mitigate the possibility of cut-through traffic between South Park and Cottage Hill. I think that was one of the primary concerns. So there'll be private property between the two developments that will, there'll be access, and emergency vehicles would be able to gain access, but it would be gated by either a gate in place that emergency vehicles have access to or ballards that are placed there. It would be, golf carts could get through there if the folks in the subdivisions take their golf carts to the park, community park, or whatever type of amenity the developers decide to put there. There's also a traffic impact analysis that we've actually already started. That will have to be completed before they start any of the development. It'll have to be completed and the necessary safeguards for egress and ingress are put into place prior to starting the development. You know, the city recognizes that the development is only part of the larger study of that area, and the applicant may only be responsible for a portion of the needed improvements in order to have safe egress and ingress. Shall be designed for individual ownership, so sold fee simple. No more than 20% of the homes may be leased at any time and may be occupied only by a residential family unit with no more than two unrelated individuals, which goes right in line with the next standard condition. The developer shall establish enforceable declaration of covenants and restrictions, including all covenants constituting zoning conditions. Shall establish a property owners association with the right and obligation to enforce such covenants and restrictions prior to the issuance of building permits for the townhomes. So that provide us with the HOA bylaws prior to starting the development as well. And so the hope would be that Condition 3 would be wrapped into those HOA bylaws and be governed by the homeowners association. Each plan or structure must be approved by Architectural Control Committee, which the City of Carrollton would have one person or staff member appointed to that. Front yard shall be sited. POA shall maintain all common grounds. Dumpsters with enclosures shall be utilized for garbage collection. Vehicles may only park on paved areas designated for that purpose only. No inoperable vehicles be left to maintain on any lot. Community amenities shall be provided. Architectural standards, and these are some of the things that we added along with the input of the developers. One of the following methods, setback variation between dwelling units. In other words, it wouldn't be a static, flat front. There would be setbacks with each unit. No more than two units could have the same setback. A vertical modulation within each dwelling unit, and again, that's to just not have the flat facade. You would have modulation either vertically or horizontally, or possibly both. Architectural elements, restate that, that the horizontal modulation must be in existence. Bay, bow, or garden windows, decorative window lintels. The exterior siding, it gives restrictions on that, on the exterior siding. Porches, each dwelling must have a, each dwelling unit shall have at least one porch, balcony or patio, stoop or deck facing the street with a landing no less than four-by-four. Talks, it goes into detail about the windows and how much windows must be on each wall. Roofs, roof pitch, 612 or greater on all roofs. Garages, it talks about the conditions for the garages and the pedestrian entries as well, and there's a lot on there. I got the most of it, but I paraphrased the last few bullet points there that just talks about the architectural design, and I do think, Madam Mayor, that we have the petitioners here speak in favor of the...
Okay. Mr. Denny?
John Denny at 2345 Hazen Mill Road. We decided to try to incorporate this property because it would give us a lot better, what I would call a front door, and we think we can have a better community as a result of having visibility and access to US 27 rather than just the Brock Street or just the Cottage Hill area. Mostly would just be glad to answer any questions, but... Um, mostly would just be glad to answer any questions, but we are, I, I think every one of these things we were planning to do, and I'm glad to see the city putting them in a zoning condition or a special use condition, and I will say, um, I also hope to see these or similar conditions used on a lot of other property. Because I just, I, I, I think, you know, it's, it's easy for something to happen and the properties to change hands, and, and, um, no matter what the, the developers intend, you can always have it go in a different direction. So I think it's, uh, commend you and commend the staff, and I, I will have to say there was one idea that I wish were mine, but it was not, and that was Erica's idea of putting a, a small community park between the two phases with, um, some sort of traffic impediment, whether it be a gate or something like what you have on the, the green belt with the, with a, a post or something, can be removed so that you still have emergency access in case of a tree falling down or power line being down. Either, either one could use, uh, either direction out, but we just, we think it will allow for, um, a nice development. And as you, all of you, I think, know that we already have, um, a lot of these conditions on the, the, uh, Windmill Park subdivision, which will, or zoning conditions that'll stay in place, and, um, mostly I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Now, Mr. Denny, I think, um, I, I would agree, Windmill Park has been a great asset to the city, and it's, it's, it's a very attractive area, very attractive homes. Um, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Denny? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the Brock Street development? Okay. Hearing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, um, grant the special use permit of thirty-three Brock Street with the conditions that's been outlined as an addendum to the zoning.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the rezoning request for seven seventy-four Old Airport Road. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is a request, um, from ER three to ER two, to M two Heavy Industry. It's a applicant is Buildmore Enterprises, so, Buildmore Enterprise Services LLC. It's approximately fifty-three acres at, uh, seven seventy-four Old Airport Road. Um, the Planning Commission heard this as well, and they recommended denial of the rezoning request by Buildmore Enterprises Services, uh, at seven seventy-four Old Airport Road, um, with the conditions. We went back to the developer, we, uh, discussed this, and talked with, uh, the county folks as well. Um, in the, uh, uh, we come up with some more conditions. We have more conditions that we put on it. What the biggest thing was that we moved the drive, the entrance into the, uh, uh, to the plat, we moved it as far away from the, uh, first, the nearest residential driveway as we, uh, as they could. We also, uh, implemented a one hundred foot buffer between the, uh, the site and, uh, in any residential, um, establishment. It was, uh, again, the other conditions, the staff conditions, but, uh, ahead of time were, um, sent out to you, they're, they're bullet points there. The following uses which are normally permitted within, within M two, that they excluded, there's a whole list of those. Um, and basically, uh, they could only do most everything that they could do, they could, they could do in M one, except for any type of heavy manufacturing that did not create noise or odor. Um, and so, I think, do we have the applicant here, uh, to speak today? The, just, it should be noted that there is adjacent to several other properties that is zoned, uh, M one and M two, there are, that it is, uh, uh, several properties that are zoned industry out in that area.
And just to add to what Mr. Brooks said, and we did consult with the county on this because just about this whole area is county, except this one strip that we have that belongs to the city that was annexed in, um, years ago and has set just vacant all this, and I think Mr. Sewell's here to speak on behalf of the developer.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. My name's Tripp Sewell, I'm an attorney here in town. Uh, my office is over at five twenty-three Noonan Street, and I do, am here to represent Buildmore Enterprises, which is the developer in this case. I do have some pictures of the current conditions in and around the property that I'd like to present to the mayor and council, um, if I could approach with those.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Those pictures show, uh, again, the condition of the property, setbacks of the adjoining properties, can, um, conditions of surrounding properties and things of that nature, uh, and they were all taken within about the last week. So it should give you all a nice representation of what's in and around the property as it stands now. I will point out that, um, there is a lot of trash in those photos, and that, a lot of those come from people squatting on the property, cutting through the property and things like that. And we certainly think that approving this zoning and there actually being a development there will cut down on most, if not all, of that, um, hazard to the community. We are requesting a rezoning to M two Heavy Industrial with the exceptions listed. As already stated, most of the more obnoxious uses in the M two zoning are cut out of that, um, but my clients are, uh, looking to potentially put some type of commercial or industrial warehouse or distribution center, possibly manufacturing. Um, I will point out that this is more of a prospective rezoning. There is no immediate plan or contract to put anything on the property. Um, however, uh, a- as you all know, any type of distribution center or things like that, they don't want to deal with rezoning later on, they don't want to deal, um, with having to, to go through that. They're looking for property that's ready to go, and that's what my clients are looking to provide for them. The plans that you have in front of you are very conceptual in nature. Again, the property will be, uh, built to suit the end user. However, you will notice that there is, uh, a substantial, I believe it's a hundred foot buffer, uh, on the property, which my clients are prepared to, to install to eliminate any concerns from neighbors as far as noise, um, things of that nature.
Land, or what is it?
Uh, as of now, most of the land is wooded. Um, my clients are not intending to, to leave that necessarily, but they would install a buffer, um, to, to eliminate the noise and think, concerns of that nature, uh, and, and I believe they would be open to the mayor and council's, uh, recommendations or requirements for what that buffer would consist of. As already stated as well, uh, we have been working with the county and Commissioner McLendon to alleviate some of the concerns of the county residents that, that are around the property. So, uh, we're not dealing with just city residents, since it is, um, county around most of the property there. We do believe that there are several other, uh, businesses and properties that have a similar use there already, and that it certainly, uh, would benefit the city to, uh, add this as a, as a potential site for an industrial area. Um, it, the access should be, uh, very easy to get to. Again, it's not going to disturb the surrounding area, and the city needs jobs and, and industry. And my clients are prepared to work to go out and find that. Unless, uh, you all have any other questions from me, my clients, the developers, as well as the property owners are here prepared to speak as well, and again, absent any questions, I'll be happy to yield the floor to them.
I've, I've got a question. Um, the, um, the stated one hundred foot buffer, um, you know, I've looked at the aerial of this property, and there is a wooded buffer in place on most of the property line that's adjacent to residential structures at this point, and you mentioned that they might not necessarily be utilizing that. I'm wondering why you would do away with an existing buffer to put something else out there?
I, I imagine, and they can speak to this, uh, better than I can, um, but I imagine that the main concern is being able to utilize, uh, dirt and things of that nature for the grading and things like that. Um, but again, they would put back a very good buffer, be it a berm, um, landscaped bar- buffer, uh, whatever the mayor and council, uh, would be willing to approve in that nature. And I will point out, uh, again, and I'm glad you brought up that point, that most of the properties, uh, have a buffer themselves. Uh, there are no real, uh, houses right on the property line or anything. The only thing very close to the property line is a warehouse structure, which you all have a picture of in front of you.
So you mean to tell me that much trash is back there?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Wow.
And, and again, one of our main hopes here is to, to clean that up, clean the area up. Uh, if there's a warehouse there, they're not going to be allowing pass-through traffic, things like that. Um, and I, I will point out as well, there were several tents set up on the property from squatters and things of that nature.
So how many tires were back there? Cause it's a lot of...
I, I will let one of my clients speak to that. He's the one that actually took the pictures. Um, I have not been to the property myself, so he would be in a better position to answer that question than me.
Well, I think that at some point, we're going to need to define this buffer a little better than just having a hundred foot buffer. Um, you know, cause I've, I've been under the impression that this would be a buffer on the property, the, that the petitioner owns now. There would be a hundred foot buffer on their property between any other residential parcel.
And it will be. I, I simply was stating that the, the properties themselves, the adjoining properties have a buffer as well. I'm firmly aware that, you know, they can clear that if they want to.
Right.
Um, my clients are prepared to put a hundred foot buffer on the subject property.
Right. Okay. Well, I, I know at, at some juncture, whenever there is a defined user for the property, they will have to resubmit their drawings and that kind of thing to the city.
Sure.
They just need to be aware that we will be requiring a landscape buffer of some degree to shield their property from the, uh, residential properties.
And my clients certainly understand that. Um, and I want to point out that, you know, they're not just random people, random developers from Atlanta or anything like that wanting to, to mess up our community. They do own property in Carroll County, in the surrounding area, and they're certainly wanting to be good neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want Mr. Zaccos to, do you want to ask him questions, Brett? The owner?
No, no.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about...
All right. I think we're good. Okay, is there, okay, just one minute. All right, so we've had, um, the presentation now, and at this time, is there anyone to speak against the development of the property? Okay. All right. Um, I will allow for you to speak. You'll have three minutes. All of it should be addressed to the mayor and council, not to the property owners. And then, um, also, you know, we're going to keep this in an orderly fashion. We will take into consideration everything you say tonight. So when you come to speak, you need to tell us your name, your address, and, do you want a telephone number, Haley? Okay. Uh, your name and your address, and, um, Mr. Triplett will start the timer when you start speaking. So, ma'am, did you want to address us? Okay. Can you come to the podium?
I'm glad to be here this evening. My name is Margaret Ann Collins. I live at seven oh three Old Airport Road. We have twelve acres, which is directly, I'm sorry. Do I need to start over?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Um, Margaret Ann Collins, seven oh three Old Airport Road. We have twelve acres directly across from the property in question. We have goats and sheep on that property, and, uh, we're obviously against any industry across the road from where we live. Uh, I don't think any of you would like industry across from your home, and, um, I'm concerned about traffic. Uh, there's a great deal of foot traffic up and down Old Airport Road, going down to the Quick Trip, uh, to buy things. And I've even seen mothers pushing strollers in the road with their baby, cause there's not any sidewalks or anything, uh, for these people to go on. I've even called nine one one when I reported a lady pushing a stroller in the street. And my concern is with all the traffic, uh, that this industrial park might, uh, provide. Uh, obviously, I think y'all would agree that it's not a good thing to have industry across from your home. Um, I hope you will take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, let me, I need to correct, you have more than three minutes if you have something else you want to say.
Uh, I just wish they would do a traffic study. Fire engines go down that road all the time. They use it to cut through to the Shady Grove area. Um, and it's, it's a very busy street. I'm surprised they're not doing a traffic study. I did ask about that, and I was told it wasn't required, but I think it would be a good idea to do that. Okay? Thank you very much.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. You say you need, it's a possibility if you could get some sidewalks on that street for people to walk on, versus the walking in the street.
Well, that would be wonderful, but I don't ever see that happening.
County.
I know.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Sir, did you want to address the council?
My name is Frankie Capes. I'm a forty-nine year resident of the Old Airport Road. My property joins this acreage. This property originally was, this fifty-three acres was a residential farm on McCall Towns, and I guess most of you know that. And it was a buffer, it's been a buffer from we people that, that are residents there, we're in the county, uh, from the, the crazy one sixty-six and the, uh, Quick Trip and, you know, the service stations and the intersections. And I'd like to speak about the intersection down there. We all know that intersection. That intersection is terrible. With this proposal of, you know, a business here, that, that we're totally against, you're going to have more traffic, and you're going to have more accidents. And as Ms. Collins talked about, you know, the, the road now, I mean, it's twenty-four hours a day, uh, you know, terrible traffic, uh, sirens, the fire department, police, State Patrol, and, and again, like Ms. Ms. Collins said, you've got a lot of walkers, you know, on that property. But, uh, in question, one of, one of the things about that property, you know, they're, they're talking, they're, two-thirds of that property is going to be designated as wetlands in the back, so you can't use that. You want to use it up front, up here next to us, you know, residents here. And there's five acres of that property that, on the very front of it, that it joins Old Airport Road, uh, in front of, uh, Mr. Perdett's property and, and, um, uh, Ms. Collins's property. You know, nobody can tell you, you know, what they're going to do with this property. And that, our biggest problem is, you know, we don't want, we, and we don't need residential, I mean, uh, commercial property out here, especially heavy residential. How would you like to live next to heavy residential? We, we... We bought and moved out here and on Old Airport Road to be in a quiet country setting. And Old Airport Road, for the biggest part, all my life, has been residential and agricultural. No business is on the road. The only business I've ever known on the road was McGee's Little Shop down there at the TV and the Old Airport Grocery. It stayed in business for a couple of years. So we just... We feel like that it's just, you know... We don't need heavy industrial out there. The property has been zoned in the city limits for 15 years now, residential three acres. Why now heavy, heavy industrial? So me, my family, and the other residents here, we oppose the rezoning to heavy residential, I mean, heavy industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address... Okay, Patricia?
I'm Patricia Burdette, and I own the property directly across the 50 acres that you're considering. My property is directly behind the racetrack service station, so I would be the first Carroll County property that would be affected. But the Old Airport Road is one and a half miles of a Carroll County road. And I looked at the Carroll County records today and did a count. There are 395 homes on that road that will be affected by your decision. Now, when we had our first development meeting, or meeting, the developer did not know who or what the end user would really be. And it appears they still don't know what the end user is or will be. It's based on what I think I'm hearing is the end user's needs. So based on a county road, how would the city handle that if you were to approve this rezoning? The county laws are pretty strict in that it only allows for six wheels on this road. Well, that's a pickup truck and a trailer with a lawnmower on it. I mean, let's face it, you're not going to get some rigs in and out of that 50 acres. Also, it keeps being mentioned that there's already industry there. That industry is on Highway 166. It is not on the Old Airport Road. So again, you've got 395 homes on that road. They'll all be affected. So I would appreciate it if you will consider that. And also, you know, the city of Carrollton, a long time ago, developed a park for heavy industry. There are 44 acres for sale on the Old Bremen Road now. If the city of Carrollton needs that, why not move that industry over there that's being proposed here? And let's not dot up Carroll County and the city of Carrollton with heavy industry zoning. So having said all that, I'm all for free enterprise capitalism, but you've got to find something that goes there that's going to make the residents of Carroll County happy and that would be good for the whole community. And I just don't think we have it. There are just too many open ends on what can go in heavy industry. Thank you.
Would you mind telling me your name one more time?
It's Patricia Burdette, B-U-R-D-E-T-T-E.
Thank you.
And I don't know if y'all have received a copy of what has been excluded that could be built there. Do y'all have a copy of that? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Yes, ma'am. Come ahead.
I'm Carol Crook. I've been on Melba Drive for 70... I'm sorry, I'm 70 years old. And I've been on Melba Drive for 46 years. We built our home. It's the last home on Melba Drive. We built our home in 1976. And the attorney made the statement, there wasn't anybody right on the property line. My porch is 15 to 20 feet off of the property line, my back porch. And it is a screened-in porch, and I am that close to the property line. And I would appreciate y'all taking this into consideration, that I am an old lady. My husband built the home, and if I have to pick up and move, I don't think I can do that. And that's all I have to say. And thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council concerning this matter?
All right. Do I have a motion to grant the rezoning request of 774 Old Airport Road?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this for 30 days.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, the rezoning request will be tabled for 30 days. Oh, I'm... Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I believe that she did ask if there was anyone that wanted to speak, but...
Okay. Well... Okay. All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning request?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Nass. I live at 605 Bert Dale Boulevard in Carrollton. And I'm here with my mother, Kimberly Clayton, as the seller of 774 Old Airport Road. My dad, Mark Clayton, passed away in October of this year from COVID. Sorry. He and I worked side by side in many capacities since I was 13. He purchased this property with intent to later sell or develop the property. Since his passing, my mother and I have made the decision that the property needs to be sold. My dad had been involved in looking into zoning options and opinions for this property before his passing. The offers that we're receiving based... Are based for commercial use for the zoning. It's my understanding that it's currently zoned for residential still. And this poses a problem for the sewer capacity. This property could encompass up to as many as 18 houses, from my understanding, if it was kept as residential, which would require significant work to add sewers from the city. I've been made aware that there's the concern from neighbors for traffic involved in selling this property as commercial. However, I would like for them to also keep in mind that the construction of 18 to 20 houses will only result in a constant flow of construction traffic during the development period, but also increased traffic due to obvious increase in residency, which would provide for consistent flow at all hours of the day and night. If this property is zoned and sold for commercial, there will be no need for an expansion on sewer lines, to my understanding, but will also mean the possibility of an expedited construction process and completed construction site, as well as controlled time of traffic, because employees are coming in and leaving at specific times during the day. This will also bring jobs to the area, which should increase the morale of the area. I understand the concern for it touching other people's property, but I feel like the developers have done a really great job with their drawing as far as providing not only a buffer, but even a landscaped buffer. And I come from a farm that I always said my dad made look like Augusta National, so I do appreciate that. So I understand that concern for that, but I also see the benefit of commercial, it being controlled in and out, and not as many people living there, and also boosting jobs in our area. This is property that we don't need to sit on. We need to be relieved of the property. So, I mean, we have to let it go one way or the other. So we really appreciate your time and consideration in this matter, as we would like to be relieved of the property as well as the expense of keeping it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the development of the rezoning? Hearing none. I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Zaccos.
Paul Zaccos, thank you. Paul Zaccos, 3500 Rain Tree Court, my address, Douglasville. So I took the photos. I took the photos on Wednesday, and right before the storm hit. So I got in and out of there pretty good. But you can see from facing 61 on the right side of QT, from those photos that I took, you can see that the right side, you know, the area is just in... I mean, it looks like a dump to the right of the QT. One of the photos I took, I'm standing in the parking lot of the QT, and, you know, you see the picture of the old boat. In walking the property, we've walked it numerous times. There's trails going through the back right side of QT that, you know, people are throwing trash. There's obviously beer cans, beer bottles. You asked about the tires. I'm not sure how many tires are there, but it's from the residential that backs up to it, because it's closer to that side of the property. So a lot's going on out there, you know. People are... There's a lot of makeshift camps and things like that. So we want to revitalize the area, and maybe if we make this first step, it allows the county to get on board and clean up the area around it. I looked at the crime reports out there, and according to crime.org, I think, a website, the grade for that area is an F, which means there's, you know, there's obviously crime out there. And I think a lot of it's because, it probably is because of the foot traffic and things like that. And we don't want to be bad neighbors. We want to do what's right by the neighbors, but we think that we're being more than generous. I know that Mr. Capes' property is probably... I wasn't familiar with the other property, but I know Mr. Capes' property is 150 to 200 feet from the line, and then we're going another 100 feet from there. So, you know, we want to be as kind as we can. We moved the entrance closer to the QT, like you guys had asked. So... And from everybody we've talked to, as far as, you know, city, county, I talked to Mr. McClendon. He did not like the idea that people were squatting on the property over there. And I know the situation you guys are in, but we're using it for the best use. It allows the homeowner to get the most amount of the property that she needs. I'm not sure with her financial situation, with her husband passing, I'm sure that her being relieved of that property is a big deal. She's been paying taxes on it for well over 10 years. So that's kind of where we... Kind of where we're at. But, you know, again, Bill Moore, Jeff, he owns a 30,000-square-foot building over in Villarica, so he's a Carroll County guy. And then the other partner in the business owns an 80-acre farm in Carroll County as well. So we're not trying to come here and cause issues. We want to revitalize the area and put nice buildings there. The other building that backs up to it is close to the property line. So that's all I had to say. But if you had any questions about those photos, I can answer any of those if you did.
I don't know that you would have this information, but does anybody have information on what the zoning of the property was when it was purchased in 2012?
Ms. Stotter, do you have that information?
That's what the record shows. Thank you.
And we had originally... We originally came at it as a residential, because we're... I'm a commercial builder as well, but we're residential builders as well, and we actually originally came. But then we were told by, you know, city council or neighboring areas, you know, we went and sat with Karen at the chamber and asked her what her need was. She said that she had plenty of folks that are in Carroll County that need more of this type of space. So we originally... You know, so we weren't opposed to the residential, but then we went the other direction, because we thought that was what the need of the city was. And... But, you know, there's going to be traffic, and, you know, and I don't know the legalities of it, Mr. Smith, but, you know, you've kind of handcuffed the client in having to sit on this property and not being able to do anything with it. And I don't, you know, I don't think that's fair to her as well. So I have... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zaccos. Yes, sir?
Madam Mayor, in all fairness, since you reopened it for the people promoting, I would, in this case, reopen for the people speaking in opposition.
All right. So is there anyone that's in opposition, wish to speak again? Yes, sir. Okay.
Frankie Capes. And the owner there, and, you know, they're bringing you the pictures of, you know, where there's been dumping or whatever, that is a responsibility of the landowner, you know. And, you know, you can't put that on us, property owners over there, whatever. So, and, you know, that's just... That's my point right there. That's, you know... My property, what's on my property, it's my responsibility to keep it cleaned up. So, you know, again, I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Okay. So is there anyone else that wants to speak against the rezoning? All right. We have a motion on the table and a second to the motion to table the motion for 30 days. Is there any further discussion? Sir, I've called for a vote now. Okay?
One last time.
Sir, I've called for a vote, so I think we...
Please, just one last.
No, I can't do it, sir. I'm sorry. You can talk to us afterwards if you like, but we've called for a vote now. So all in favor for tabling it for 30 days, say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none, motion carries, so it'll be tabled for 30 days. And this will give you a chance to contact us if you have any other comments. Okay, rezoning and waiver request for 1136 Rome Street. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request from Ms. Shading Carr. She is requesting the rezoning from R-20 to R-8, single-family residential. And she's also asking for a road frontage waiver. She would like to do this in order to split that track and be able to build a house, a smaller house, for her where her detached garage is currently located, and then sell the other track. where her detached garage is currently located, and then sell the other tract. It was taken before a planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning and the waiver request by Ms. Carr. It was unanimous, 5-0, 6-0 to recommend approval. There was no one speaking against or in opposition. There was no one there speaking in favor of, but she did supply two letters from both adjacent property owners, the property owners to the left and to the right of her house, wrote letters in support of that, asking that it be granted, that they really wanted to keep Ms. Carr as a neighbor there, that she was a good neighbor and wanted to keep her there on Rome Street with them.
Okay, you've heard the request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this rezoning? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the rezoning? Well, you certainly may address us.
Not to elongate the night, but I'm Chadin Carr from 1136 Rome Street. And I just want you to know, I've gone to a lot of lengths to try to find something else to purchase somewhere else or to build somewhere else. And I love where I am, I love my neighbors, I love the area, and there's plenty of room for me to be able to take the detached garage and go up and have something really nice for me. My husband passed away last year, and I just do not need all the other property, and I don't need to be mowing and doing all of those things. It'll give me exactly what I need, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
We don't want to lose you, Ms. Carr. Ms. Carr's been a business owner and contributed a lot to our community. Okay, so do we have a motion to grant the rezoning and the waiver request?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. So Ms. Carr, you can start your new house. Okay, we have a site plan amendment request for 125 Maple Crossing, Maple Street Commons. And this is to amend existing planned development site plan. The applicant is DGW Development Group.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have looked at this a couple of times before previously, and has been requested to be tabled by the petitioner a couple of different times in order to, I think, meet what you guys would like to see out there, as well as what they can make work for them. But they are, DGW Development Groups, requesting a site plan amendment for 1.61 acres. It's located out at the Maple Street Commons. It is, I mean, Maple Street Crossing. It's part of the Maple Street Commons planned development. It requires a site plan amendment in order to split the parcel. So they would like to split the parcel, and you see the conditions that are on the front there. It's the same conditions that we've had in place since they first come to us with this request. But they have also added that they have purchased 50 feet, in the correct, 50 feet of property. It's basically underneath the power lines that would help alleviate the traffic concerns and the flow of traffic out there in terms of their development.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to, if anybody have any questions.
Have people speaking in favor or against.
Okay, all right, so this is basically just a site plan amendment. So do we have anybody who wish to speak in favor of this development?
We're here to speak on behalf of the...
Okay.
We should do that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll be quick. Pete Glanton, 125 Stewart Street, Carrollton. First want to say thank you to this body and to the city planning staff. This request first came before you, over two years ago now, in March of 2020, when we first started working on this. But in engagement with you and working back and forth, I'm excited of what we've come up with as our final proposal to you this evening to divide this lot. I think it's going to allow us to best utilize the space of this parcel. As Mr. Brooks alluded to, our plan is we have a single-owned parcel that is 1.3 acres. We're going to take that parcel and divide it in two, and then also at the same time acquire 50 feet of adjacent land from the adjacent parcel, which it'll make the one parcel into two different parcels in utilizing the land that's underneath the power lines currently, which would, as it stands now, that land underneath the power lines could not be used for any other purpose to actually build anything under it, because there's an easement due to the power. So we're excited about the opportunity here. And again, we just appreciate the feedback that we've gotten from this body and from the city planning staff to allow us to really work over this past two years to progress through this. And so I think our request is fairly straightforward in the sense that we are not requesting any deviation from the existing zoning. We're not requesting any deviation from the existing binding conditions that govern the Maple Street Commons development. We're simply requesting an adjustment of the parcel. And so I'm here, my partner Luke Waters here is with me as well, so we're happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Glanton. Any questions for Mr. Glanton?
You don't want us to table this for 30 more days, so...
Well, I think I promised you last time when I requested a table that we would finally come to a decision soon, so...
Here we are.
Yeah.
He's really not that funny, y'all, so...
Okay, is there anyone here to speak against this development? Okay. At this time, I'll call for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the amended site plan for 125 Maple Crossing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions?
I'd just like to incorporate in this motion, if we could, that the staff recommendations will be incorporated into the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so Mr. Uglum, would you want to amend your motion?
Yes.
Do you...
Well, are you familiar with all these?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Okay, so, all right, we have now an amendment to the original motion to include the staff recommendation...
I'm talking about the things that's supposed to be here.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, that would be the Maple Street Commons condition.
All right. And do I have a second to the amended motion?
Second.
Have a second to the amended motion. All right, is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Carroll County Health Department, City of Carrollton Municipal Court.
Yes, ma'am, they had come to us, as we discussed in our last work session, they'd come to ask if, to have the authority or the ability to bring codes violations, health department codes violations, to municipal court instead of going to magistrate court. And so we've discussed that a couple of different times, we've discussed it at length. And so tonight, if you decide to do so, we're asking, they're asking to vote to allow them to bring them to municipal court. What that would mean is then the city and the staff and with our attorney would then start working on the ordinance which permits them to bring it to the municipal court, which basically would be adopting the health department codes. And then it would be stated that they would have the ability to bring them to the municipal court themselves. And it's a service that they've asked us, it's not uncommon in other counties, and it's something that they would like to, for us to help them out with here.
Okay, do I have a motion to amend our ordinances to include the Carroll County Health Department ordinances so that these cases can be brought before the municipal court of City of Carrollton?
Mayor Kason, what we're requesting at this point is a motion to move forward with it, not to amend the ordinances, but it's more in the nature of an advisory vote to move forward in presenting an ordinance which adopts the state codes as Carrollton law, which can then be enforced in the municipal court.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Is there any further questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, the next item on our agenda is board appointments for the Board of Development Appeals.
Yes, ma'am, we have two vacancies. Mr. John Avery has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the board, so we would like to reappoint him for another term. And then, as we recognized earlier, Ms. Quintine Velar, who served five terms on the board, will be stepping down. And we have asked that we add Ladonna Friar as the, in her spot there for the Board of Development Appeals.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to appoint John Avery and Ladonna Friar to the Board of Development Appeals?
I so move that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, the next item is to, a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.